It is now, uh, 11:00. Let's call meeting of order. We have the approval of events for March 4th.
One minute.
Uh, discussion. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Like same. Discussion approval of claims.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The approval of the memorandum of personal offense actions, I'll pass that around for signature.
Move it.
Move it. Second.
Discussion. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. The authorization, the chairman to sign authorization.
Move it.
Second.
Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Uh, item four, county assessor, candy sand. Sure as you're here, you want to come up and let us know if we're going to be approving here for that.
I'm asking for a resolution, basically rescinding resolution number sixty-eight oh four, the C bill exemption. Um, in two thousand, well, two thousand thirteen, legislation was passed, um, basically addressing ag land, non-crop ground and crop ground. And so, we are now putting adjustments on, all of the downward adjustments on the non-crop land, including structures, building sites. Therefore, we're looking to get rid of the C bill, um, basically because it will be still getting the non-crop adjustment. But, there'll be less restrictions, they won't have to sign up for it every year. They can have economic gain on it now. So, we're just asking to rescind the first original one, sixty-eight oh four.
So, it's really, uh, an advantage to the landowners to give them one more tool to take advantage of, uh, the situation. Okay. Any other discussion? Questions?
Move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor-
Just one motion to rescind and to adopt a new one.
Well-
There's a resolution that's part of the act and if you approve the resolution, you just need a single motion for that.
Okay, so we'll, uh, have this in, you know, to, motion to rescind it. Is there any further discussion? Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. And then a motion to adopt the resolution? Move it. Is there a second?
Second.
Can we do that?
That's right.
Okay. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, does that do it? All right. You're welcome, Sherry. Okay, um, item five is the, um, discussion of the action approved by the, uh, for an audit firm. Dennis?
Okay, Iowa law states that for, uh, I want to say, say like the Argosia or the Hard Rock, they have to have an audit, but the audit has, firm has to be approved by the board of supervisors. It's a one-time deal. And we have an opinion that there is no conflict of interest. So, we're here today to ask for the approval of the audit firm of-
McGladrey.
Thank you.
Right.
To proceed with the audit.
Okay. Move it. Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, that was our primary concern about conflict of interest. And that's been cleared by our attorneys.
Yes. And also, they are registered to do audits in the state of Iowa. Yes, that's a question of the resolution. That is approved.
Okay. Uh, those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, passed. We're down to item number, and that's a time set, um, thing we've got about five, ten minutes. Does anyone have, uh, anything to discuss for five minutes until we get down to that?
You could do a little song and dance.
Do a little song and dance.
It's Patty's.
Patty's here, if you want to go to eight. Just jump on down.
Patty, you want to come up? We'll go, we'll move to eight. Because that is not a time set. Morning.
Good morning. Um, the memo that you've received on that is, we did take, um, the two providers that had been submit bids on what was going to cost to move our office furniture, author, set it up and the new pieces and parts that we need, for the system as well as for the expansion. And so, price comparisons were there on the other end. And, um, we're suggesting that we go with, um, office elements, which is roughly twenty thousand dollars less.
Okay, what's the total bid on that, Patty?
The quotes were, each office was fifty-nine thousand, forty dollars and eighty-six cents. And office elements was thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety-six cents.
Okay. Okay, any, um, discussion of that recommendation? Furniture? Will entertain a motion for discussion?
Will the bid of office elements be accepted?
Second.
Any discussion, further discussion? Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Do you know when that will happen?
Um, they have to wait until the HPAIC-
Everything else is scheduled. Is that scheduled to occur yet?
Um, I need to check with my network on that. They were checking the C will be, HPAIC would actually be received. And they want to make sure that that's all complete before they proceed with that. First move of dollars possible.
Item number B is discussion of the provider improvement request. Patty, what do you have to present on that?
I believe I provided in your packets, um, a sheet, a worksheet of all the requests that we have received, and providers, the projects, uh, that they were, and then the individual cost per unit. I do have all the documentation from the providers, we've gone through it. And, there wasn't one thing on there that didn't fit within the guidelines, um, that we said they had to meet. Um, and it is within the amount of dollars that the board had approved for those projects. So, I would recommend awarding all projects as requested by the providers.
Head, move it.
Second?
I'd second.
Now, will this, uh, help? I, I know it's, it's, some of these things that, you know, these providers need are things that they couldn't do on their own, uh, with, with, with existing funds. So, this is really a, uh, a benefit to them, Patty, as far as the providing services and, uh, adequate facilities for their clientele. Can you kind of get into that a little bit?
One of the work has always placed on it is that it has to have direct benefit to the individuals that we serve. And all of these do. I mean, it's for transportation, it's for remodel of existing facilities for accessibility. It's for education, um, tech kind of things that help in your jobs more efficiently, as well as there's tech report, uh, requests in there for individuals to be able to itemize. And, um, the art program just does a fantastic job. And, and that's tactile kind of things, art things, movement things, um, during the summer to keep, um, the students from repressing at all. So, yeah, there, there's a lot of neat things in here that the providers should really appreciate. And they just couldn't accommodate them within their pretty infrastructure.
Absolutely.
Did the Pride group-
Go ahead, Mark.
Did the Pride group apply?
No, they didn't.
Did they know to apply?
They were not included because they were not a, um, the list that we had provided the board was just for the, the very town providers. And they considered themselves to be home-based in Hunt County.
But they're serving our people.
They are serving our people.
Jim?
We didn't include like a REM or any of those other folks too, because they're not based here.
Yeah, okay. Jim?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just had to say thank you for two things. Number one, we didn't have to have Mr. Clausen do a song and dance. I really appreciate that.
Yeah, we appreciate of that too.
Let me mark that down.
And then, just to give you three brief examples of what this means to us. We can fix the elevator. We have to have the elevator working, okay? It's about to go kaput, to put it mildly. Secondly, our restrooms for the patients who come into the waiting room have not been renovated in thirty years. So, you can imagine what that looks like. So, that will be helpful. And our steps are falling apart out front too. I mean, there's just three quick examples of how this helps us in a variety of ways for the patients we serve directly. So, thank you all. Thank that.
You're welcome.
Actually, we appreciate the job you do, Jim, so. We appreciate the job you do.
Oh, thank you, I'm sorry. My hearing's starting to go even with-
You just want me said twice.
Thank you very much.
Is that right? Come on up, you want to say, give me your name, because-
Hey Vander Plaats, Goodwill is great plans. I also want to echo Jim's comments. I'm so appreciative of this. What this means for us at Goodwill. Our day habilitation program for individuals with developmental and electrical disabilities has grown from about twenty people to over forty-five people the past year. And, our main goal for those individuals is to get them out in the community every single day. And in order to do that, we need vehicles to, to do that. Uh, we've been looking for a way to purchase vehicles for the last year or so, and this was a great opportunity. We're also going to use a lot of the technology, uh, for participant improvement. Get them familiar with iPads, assistive technology through the iPads and laptops that they can use. So, this is a, a great opportunity and can't think of word enough for, with this opportunity.
Well, we're glad that we can help and, uh, we can do these things. Jackie?
We all, as a region, we're also, I know the CPC's brought forth the idea of as the monies are pooled to expand perhaps provider improvements to all the counties. I mean, it's an idea that's been tossed around as a, a way to, to spend down some of the funds. So, this may, um, radiate out.
Right.
It's a good program, there's interest in it.
How many people do you think that we're affecting by, uh, doing this, Patty? I mean, as a whole in the various programs that we're dealing with and families?
Twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred families.
Between the folks that utilize soon in mental health and all the folks in the art program and NPI med staffs, so, everybody can reach out and touch them if you can.
It's very important to the community as a whole.
We had a good, uh, public meeting too the other night, I thought. It was Ash Wednesday, so attendance was down a little bit, but, um-
Still in trouble.
So, very good discussion on, um, creating awareness, um, at the legislative level for funding. I just thought there were some very-
Yeah, I wish I could have been here for that.
It was good.
Unfortunately, I was out of town, but, uh-
Good ideas.
It was, uh, I know it was a good meeting.
By the providers and some of the clients.
Good, neat.
For consumers, I got to switch that over to consumer.
Okay. Is there any further discussion, comments, whatever?
I have one after we've rolled on this, but-
Okay, all right.
Don't go away.
Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Good. Have anything else? Go ahead.
Didn't we allocate four hundred thousand for this?
Yes, we did.
Got a hundred and forty thousand left.
Roughly, yes.
Got plans for it?
Um, we're looking at what the expenditures are right now because it's coming down where we can best identify them. Some of that may be taken up in, um, those other areas of residential. It's, it's a real tough year to even guess to me what your expenditures are anyway.
How many providers, uh, are coming into the county like Pride group?
Um, we have had REM, uh, express an interest, that's R E M, Rem, you know, REM. And we had, um, the hospitals from down in the Yonawa area that have already opened up some one hole mobility and are looking at doing two additional. And that, again, is to keep people in Woodbury County and serve them in Woodbury County instead of having them leave the area, as well as it's totally eliminated. Folks sometimes go on waiting lists, but it's a real, it's waiting because maybe the parents aren't ready for them to go. And as the facilities become available then, they become more used to and aware of what's available, then the place is perfect.
I think that hundred and forty should be, uh, considered for those agencies like Pride because they're purchasing homes in Woodbury County. They're not moving it in or taking the money away. They're serving our people.
Yeah, I don't disagree, uh, except that will be taken care of when we form the region. Right now, I'm concerned about our local providers. And if we have a, coming from me, this is strange, but if we've got a hundred and forty thousand dollars, we might want to try to do this all over again. Or, come up with-
Ten hundred and fifty-two.
Yes.
Well, let's look at those suggestions and we'll get back to it on a later date. Thank you Patty, uh, for everything. Let's move on to, it's now ten fifteen and we have several items here scheduled at fourteen-
We know.
Ten fifteen, time set. So, uh, let's get into the, uh, first item, which is the public hearing on the fiscal, uh, budget for two thousand and fifteen. Yes, Dennis?
Actually, there are two items on the agenda at the same time. I'd recommend you do item seven first and then follow up with item six.
Okay. Then we'll do that. Let's go on to item seven then, uh, which is the, uh, public, uh, hearing and sale of a piece of property. One, three, two, eight, eight, five. It's located at sixteen eighteen West Sixth, West Second Street. Is there anyone here to speak for or against the sale of this property? This is just for speaking for or against the sale. If there's no one to be heard, then I-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If there's no one to be heard, move the hearing to be closed.
Second.
Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Now, is there anyone in the audience, uh, that would like to bid on this property? And if so, please give your name, uh, and the amount of money that you're bidding for. Yes, ma'am?
Susan Cowell.
Hey Susan.
I'm initially bidding three hundred and six dollars.
Okay. Is there anyone else to be, uh, to bid on this piece of property?
I, I think the bid was probably four hundred and six dollars. The cost of service is a hundred and six. I don't want to support Harris.
Minimum bid, but then, there's an administrative, uh, cost there too. Is that built into that three oh six?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, then your bid is legitimate. Uh, is there anyone else to bid on this property? Hearing now, I'd entertain a motion to accept, uh, Susan's bid.
Move it. Second.
Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. See the lady out here and she will, uh, take your money.
Thank you.
Come on. Okay, we'll go back to, uh-
Just for your information, probably ought to clear that up later. Add that on.
Publication is the date, yeah. All right, we will go move on to item six, which is the, uh, public hearing on a proposed budget, um, for two thousand and fifteen. That's, uh, we're, we're going into the public hearing portion of it. And Dennis, do you want to, uh, go through, uh, some of the facts, figures that we have here prior to, uh, opening it up to the public to make com- public comment on it?
Okay, I think one of the first things you got to do is item D. Why is, no, let's do item A. Okay. We're having a public hearing.
Here, right.
So, I did send a memo out to the supervisor and to the board packets here. And what it does, it actually explains the new tax rates. It explains how much tax asking increase is. It also shows the different effects and also shows the different rollbacks on property. Show how, actually, there's a shift in who pays the taxes. And unfortunately, because ag land is going up so fast, I think it went up fifty percent last year, that the rollback doesn't fully cover that because they do the rollback on a statewide average where some county goes up higher, it doesn't roll back enough to not shift the cost of taxes. So, unfortunately, that's what happens there. Our tax asking increase is going to be one million, six thirty-four, four ninety-one. There's four major reasons why that's happening. One, we did have four insurance holidays the last two fiscal years. We knew this was a potential pitfall coming down the road that if we didn't have the insurance holidays, we would have to increase taxes. That amounts to one point one million in the general supplemental fund. Also, we are budgeting for courthouse security, two hundred and fifty thousand. We are budgeting also for a general election, which is once every two years. And this year, it's a major, it's a non-major, so it's a hundred and thirty-six thousand increase over the primary and the taxpayer has to pay for that. And there's no choices there in what we do there. I think I did address one more item that needs to be addressed, and that's lawsuits. And, other costs, workers comp in our liability fund. Hopefully, that's calmed down quite a bit now. So, but we do have to rebuild our reserves because we're down to three hundred and some thousand right now. And we have five months, four months to go yet. Potentially, we might be down to nothing. Unless the costs, you know, go back down, which we hope they do. But the million five with a five hundred thousand dollar increase is to rebuild that amount that we do have money in there. In that case, we do have litigation down the road. Nobody can predict that. So, basically, that's why taxes are going up. Four items that really are beyond our control. We've been very fortunate to have healthy people the last two years, but we got hit pretty hard this year. And hopefully, that will improve.
Hopefully, it'll improve.
Yes.
Comments from the audience, if there's any, uh, on the budget? Yes, sir.
Hi, James Embrogan, Taxpayers Research Council, five sixteen Nebraska Street. I want to talk a little bit about the process that you go through for your budget today. You ask all the department heads and elected officials to bring you a proposed budget. And then you guys go through line item by line item to try and find ways to cut the budget. And you, the very beginning of the, uh, budget process, you say your goal is to try to reduce the task askings to help limit property tax increases. And I'm here today to tell you that there is another way, there are other options out there to actually make the budget process easier for you guys. Because you go through the line items and you say, "Well, if we cut this, how's that going to affect services?" Or, "Or is this a good program that should receive funding?" And the problem that's not, or the thing that's not actually happening here is we're not having a discussion of what the goals are for the various programs and for the department heads. Uh, to pick on the sheriff, for instance, is it his goal to have fewer lawsuits in the jail? That'd be a great goal to have. And then, to follow that, they should have performance measures showing, these are the steps that we're taking to make sure that we're actually achieving our goals. Or in conservation, is the goal to actually have thriving parks? We don't have any performance measures to show, are our parks being utilized? Or are there issues that need to be determined? By having these types of goals, you can actually make easier decisions on what should be funded, what shouldn't be funded, what maybe needs some increases or maybe slight decreases. To give you an actual practical example here, uh, you could have said, the sheriff could have been like, "You know what, next year, I'm going to provide three new ways to actually improve efficiencies in my department." And he could come up during the budget process this year and he could have said, "You know what? Right now, when our patrol cars go out and fill up gas, we have to pay the price at the pump. Then we have to submit paperwork to the state to get a check back with the, the gas tax money that we shouldn't have had to pay in the first place back in there." You know, that, that's a whole process. Well, he's actually come up with a really great idea. He's got fleet cards now that when you stick it in there, it automatically deducts the taxes from the pump, so you don't have to go through that whole process. And if you'd look through your budget, you'd see that you guys have actually budgeted fifteen thousand dollars of reimbursement checks coming in. Well, that money's not going to happen anymore. So, by having these goals and these performance measures, that discussion could have occurred and you wouldn't be budgeting for fifteen thousand dollars that's not coming in. Now, this isn't just my idea, there's actually organizations out there, um, the National Advisory Council and State and Local Budgeting, the Government Finance Officers Association. They have all kinds of simple scenarios like this to actually help make the decisions eas- easier for you. When, when Ms. Smith talked about possibly closing Prairie Hills as an idea of help saving dollars, we find out later on that there has to be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars spent on repairs. Well, you know, if you look at your CIP budget, it wasn't in those out years. So, when you talked about your CIP budget, you just talked about what you're going to spend this year. We don't know what the goals are. We don't know if the parameters are serving those goals. And we don't look to see what's coming down in the future. Because you'd be forced into a decision of an ad hoc decision instead of actually planning out in a proper fashion. So, for next year, I'd highly recommend that you begin looking at performance measures, begin looking at goals, to make sure we're getting the kind of services that, that you guys want. And, you know, you might be saying, thinking to yourself right now that, "James, you know, we have goals. We have, we have measures." And I would tell you what my math teacher told me, that when I write down the answer without providing any work on the paperwork, she says, "That's fantastic that you could get the answer. But if you made a mistake, we can't go back to see how you made the mistake or how you did things right." So, I'd ask that these goals and these performance measures be presented during the budget process and written down on paper, so everybody can have an understanding of what's actually being achieved and what's not being achieved. And what can we do to spend dollars more efficiently and actually have a discussion other than just going through line items and hoping for the best? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other, uh, one that'd like to make a presentation or a comment on the budget? Here, Mark?
I'd like to make one comment. Since you had such a special this year with the budget and, uh, we're going to be having to pay more taxes, uh, we recommend that, and maybe this is a proper fact, we recommend that zero percentage increase of all requisitions.
Okay. Any other comments? Then I, uh, move that the public hearing be closed, or I don't move that, but is there any, is there a comment? I mean, any comments from the board in, uh, a motion to close the public hearing?
Move close of public hearing.
Okay.
Second.
Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Now, we have the, uh, discussion and action on the compensation board's recommendation for elected officials' salaries for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen. Your discussion or motion on those, uh, on those, uh, on that recommendation?
Make a motion that there be a zero increase for all elected officials.
Second.
Uh, discussion. Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. All right. We have, uh, to go back to, uh, the item C, which is a discussion and adoption of the budget. And that would include the last motion.
And I'll have the updated forms ready for you this afternoon, because I'll have you sign it. And then, when Pat gets back, he's at a funeral spot.
I would need a motion to adopt the fiscal year budget, two thousand and fifteen, for the, for the county.
I move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Any discussion? I think this, uh, I just make a comment. I think this, uh, budget was, uh, was again, a, a real challenge, as we've had in the past. Ladies and gentlemen, and I appreciate the hard work that you all put in in, uh, going through, uh, the budget process and looking at, uh, the various budgets and making the best decision for the county. As, uh, our financial director has told us, there's some items, uh, that we have completely no control of that is creating the, uh, increase in our budget that we can't avoid. If we could, we would have avoided those, uh, those increases. So, uh, I do appreciate the efforts and the work that you've, uh, done and, uh, reaching the point where we're at right now with this, with this particular budget. We have not had to, uh, lay off or to reduce services to people in this county. And we haven't since I've been on this board, uh, or you've been on this board. So, uh, that's, that's quite an accomplishment when we look at, uh, the fiscal condition of not only the state, but, uh, also the, the country as a whole. So, I do appreciate your efforts.
I would say I've had a fair amount of feedback. I guess people do read the paper because they have asked me about the raising of taxes or say, "I understand they're going to raise our taxes." And I tried to go through the scenario and, and do just a brief explanation. And, most people have understood that it was a difficult year and their own budgets have gone up. They understand the costs have, have outpaced in many times salaries, which is unfortunate. But there's been understanding, um, and not really any negative comments, at least to my face.
Well, just to, to build on that, Jackie, I, I talked to a lot of people. And, uh, I have not had really any criticism on, uh, the increase. They know that this board, in the past, has held the line and even decreased budgets. And, uh, they saw the handwriting on the wall, you know, as, you know, probably before we did. So, I can live with this budget. Nobody wants to increase taxes, but you have to provide the services unless you want to, you know, eliminate services.
Absolutely. It's a jeopardizing entire community.
And that's what people want, less. They don't want to lose the services.
Right.
That's the stronger message is if it costs-
Correct.
-a little bit more, and, and what did we come up with? About thirteen dollars a year, if you have a house? Eighteen dollars a year for a hundred thousand dollar house. So, um, keep your service, seems to be manageable, I guess.
I do think we need to go back, take a look at juvenile detention and how that's operating. That's critical. I don't think we're charging enough money per day.
Well, I, I think that we can look at that, Mark, and, and evaluate where, uh, we're, we're at with that. And we just, uh, I think that we can throw a price- at with that, and we just, I think that we can throw a price out there to those contractors that's providing, that wants our services at this particular time. But if we put a price out there that will have caused them to go to another service or county, then we've somewhat defeated what we, what we need to do.
Well, I don't think we-
But I think that we, we, we need to, and we will look at that in the very near future.
I don't think we need to charge the complete amount of money it takes to do that, but they can't do it for that money.
No, they can't. They can't.
You have to wait till those come up. I'm assuming that would come up-
Yeah, those contracts will be coming up.
I mean, they were negotiated in good faith at the time. It's just they need to be reviewed. I agree with that.
But now's the time to figure out what it is.
Absolutely.
I don't disagree with that at all.
Absolutely. Well, I'd agree with that. Any further discussion?
Well, I'll just reiterate that I think this board needs to do a better job of cutting some services that we don't need anymore. So, and I'll just stick with that.
Okay.
Yeah, juvenile detention, the contracts will come up. There's a misconception here I don't understand, and that is we have fixed costs up there. So if we get a dollar a day from people we're bringing in, that's more than we had before. So we're getting, I believe it's $100 a day per juvenile, and we have more out of Woodbury County placements in there than we have of our own. And if it's going to cost us a million dollars a year to run the place, whether you have one person in there or 25 people in there, if you're bringing in revenue, no matter what it is, it's got to be better than not bringing in revenue. And I have checked into a lot of these contracts, and $100 is getting us these kids. If we go to 150, I don't think we're going to be in the ballpark. But that's a discussion for when the contracts come up.
Because I did have a citizen say to me that, "Why don't we just ship our five out? Close it down."
That's, that's an alternative. I'm not-
Bring our dog, you with that one.
Yeah, and we have to put a figure on that, too. Transportation costs, getting those kids back and forth for whatever reason, and how is that going to affect our local law enforcement when they arrest a youngster for whatever reason? And they have to transport that youngster to Cherokee or to wherever for the, for the various services, and we don't have that facility available here. So there's all kinds of variables that has to be taken into account that a lot of people don't think about. Okay, did we vote, we haven't voted on the budget yet. So is there any further discussion on the budget? Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Or in favor and one against. Okay. Thank you, Dennis. Let's move on to, I don't think I've missed anything else here. Let's move on to item nine, which is the county sheriff with the consideration of the, as participating in Edward J. Burns' application. Sheriff, do you have anything to present on that? We've done this in the past, and it's been a shared, I think-
It's been 50% city, 50% county.
Right.
It's continuing to get cut, though.
Yeah, it's getting smaller, right.
And this year, they forewarn us that it might be 42%. That's what we deal with grants, but one thing about this grant, it's gone on for 19 years, so.
Yeah, so it's, it's-
So what's the total amount?
Well, they talked to 42% possibly. Yes. Cut. We don't know that, but that's what's been thrown out there.
What'd we get this year?
It's 25% that we have to add.
I mean, amount of money.
It's part of a deputy's salary, so I don't have that exact amount. Our office got $58,000 plus, so.
So it's going to affect your office, too?
Yes, that we still have a prosecutor doing the drug prosecution.
So if, yeah, so if it's cut 42%, what does that mean for the people that you have and the positions that you have in both of your-
They were, our people were already funded. You know, it's just, that was money that comes back to you, and then you guys decide. But we, we didn't add additional people.
Okay.
It was paying part of their salary.
But for you?
It's pretty much the same situation. The only thing that would happen is the board, the county, would have to agree to fund any underage of costs. So that, that would be the only downfall if we were to continue to get cut. The board is already paying some of that overage, there were actually underages that they're not paying for, since it has steadily been going down over the years.
So we've been absorbing it as the percentage has gone down?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
But I believe the board understands, and hopefully you will continue to agree that these are positions that are worthwhile, that are needed, that are doing a basic function that we need to continue to, to supply on behalf of the citizens.
All right.
Move to approve participation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you, gentlemen. Let's go on to item number 10, Real Economic Development. Supervisor, are you here to start off the discussion and do the introductions and-
Yeah, absolutely.
Whatever, okay.
Good morning, supervisors. I'm here this morning to present some good news and make a request of your approval to enter into an agreement that I've received from the Northwest Iowa Development for Woodbury County to participate in Northwest Iowa Development's newly established foreign trade zone, which I believe will be a tremendous asset to our local, regional, and statewide economic development efforts. With me today is Mr. Neil Adler, Executive Director of the Lamar's Area Chamber of Commerce, also a member of the Northwest Iowa Development Group, and Mr. Bill Hooton, CEO of International Trade and Transportation Strategies and Foreign Trade Zone Consultant to Northwest Iowa Development. Also here today in the audience in support of my request is Mr. Sam Wagner, representing the Siouxland Chamber of Commerce and the Siouxland Initiative, as well as Mr. Chris Myers, representing the City of Sioux City's Economic Development Department. Just to provide some background and some context, the Northwest Iowa Development is a group of six Iowa counties creating unified targeted approach to developing branding and marketing the Northwest Iowa region to attract new corporate locations and expansions, and also to attract skilled talent to support business growth. Currently, the counties that encompass Northwest Iowa Development include Cherokee, Lyon, O'Brien, Osceola, Plymouth and Sioux. Northwest Iowa Development's Foreign Trade Zone is the newest foreign trade zone in the United States, receiving their official grant of authority from the U.S. Foreign Trade Zones Board under the U.S. Customs and Board of Protection in November of 2013. This is actually the fourth foreign trade zone established in Iowa, and it is the first in the state in a rural territory. This foreign trade zone designation is expected to help attract investment and boost trade in the Northwest Iowa region. And just so you understand what it is and how it could benefit us, a foreign trade zone is a designated location in the United States where companies can use special procedures that help encourage U.S. trade activity by allowing delayed or reduced duty payments on foreign merchandise, as well as providing other cost-saving measures. Foreign trade zones benefit businesses by eliminating duties and quota charges on re-exports and deferring custom duties and federal excise taxes. They also provide companies with access to streamlined customs procedures and exemptions on foreign goods and domestic goods from state and local inventory taxes. Foreign trade zones benefit the public by helping to facilitate and expedite international trade, providing special customs procedures as a public service to help firms conduct international trade-related operations who are in competition with foreign plans. They encourage and facilitate exports, which helps to attract offshore activity and also encourages retention of domestic activity. They also assist state and local economic development efforts and will help to create employment opportunities for islands in the Northwest region. The offer we have received would require that Woodbury County submit an application to the U.S. Customs Foreign Trade Zones Board to extend Northwest Iowa Development Service territory to cover all of Woodbury County. This process would require a one-time application fee of $3,500, which I am prepared to pay out of my department's budget. The timeframe for our application's approval would be roughly six months from the time you submit our, our application, and it's put on the U.S. Customs Foreign Trade Zones Board docket, and we anticipate no reason for it to not be approved. As I said earlier, having the foreign trade zone designation in Woodbury County will be a tremendous asset to our local economic development efforts. And by partnering with Northwest Iowa Development and submitting an application to become part of their service territory, we're essentially rolling out the welcome mat for investment, business growth, and job creation in Woodbury County. As business markets continue to become more global each and every day, local businesses are looking to expand their products and services beyond our local markets. And by partnering with Northwest Iowa Development and submitting our application, we will be creating a foreign trade zone that is sure to attract new businesses to our region, and it will also inspire existing businesses to expand. And with this in mind, my recommendation is that we do submit an application and continue to collaborate with our area economic development professionals to provide our corporate clientele with yet another resource to help them grow and improve our local economy. In my opinion, it's a very nominal investment that has a tremendous opportunity for some great potential, not only in our Northwest Iowa region, but for the state of Iowa as well. And, you know, I have these gentlemen here to answer any questions that you might have in terms of prospects, or logistics, or benefits, so.
Okay, can we hear from Mr. Hooton and also Mr. Adler, and how that, I mean, they're just going to reinforce, I think, what you had to say, and probably expand the discussion a little bit, and then open it up to the board for any concerns and questions that they may have. So let's start out with maybe Neil first.
Sure. David took most of what I was going to say.
He's pretty thorough.
He is thoroughly. I must say that on behalf of Northwest Iowa Development, first of all, I want to thank all of you for the time and being open to this concept, and certainly want to applaud David for welcoming the opportunity that we brought to Woodbury County and taking the time to research and dig into it and learn about it. It's an ongoing process. I would say that Northwest Iowa Development undertook about a two-year process to study this, learn somewhat about grants in the lower region, foreign trade zones. And we took the time to hire Mr. Hooton to go out and help us analyze our companies within the six county region to determine if we even had a need or if there was going to be a use for it. And we certainly found out quickly, period of silver, there's going to be a very good use for it. So we went through the process of the application, which took about a year, and spent considerably more than $3,500, let's say, somewhere north of $60,000 to accomplish this. So we, as a regional group, we have the opportunity also to extend our service territory to a connected neighbor, and we thought that it was only appropriate and probably very worthwhile to do that with Woodbury County. And so what happens, the offer was brought to the table. Now, when the questions start, that's why we hired Mr. Hooton. He is pretty much an expert in the field, so I will field along with him anything.
Okay. Mr. Hooton?
Well, I, I believe it's a significant opportunity. I've been involved in the creation of seven original foreign trade zone grants before we needed to those other communities. It has been successful in both encouraging local business to grow and engage more effectively in the global marketplace, and as a tool for inviting inward international investment into the community. Last year, $380 billion transited the U.S. Foreign Trade Zone Program, and no one sees it. The businesses that will benefit will see it and see it clearly, and it's an easy thing to demonstrate the value before they have to take any action that might cost them money. So this is a very inexpensive entry into this program for Woodbury County. The only thing that's changed my opinion in the last couple of days, as we, as we've talked to people here, is that I think David is after my job. He's learned a lot and did a lot of research, and has been a very intelligent and capable person in trying to understand the opportunity and determine whether it should go forward or not, both in terms of determining if it's a competitive foreign trade zone relative to others, not only in Iowa, but elsewhere in the U.S., and a number of other actions that make sure that he's confident that it's a good opportunity. Other than that, I'm available for any technical or other questions you might want to ask.
So like the company up north that does the gummy bears, does this benefit them?
It does the-
There's a company that ships in those gummy bears. Does this make it better?
I didn't know that. Or candy company, yeah.
Does that make it easier for them?
Yes. I haven't met them yet, but it would make it easier for them.
So when do we get a duty-free store?
Exactly. So at the airport.
At the airport, that's right, absolutely.
Encourage people to use it.
Absolutely.
Is this more for bringing in raw materials or sending out the finished product?
Yes, the highest, the highest value historically in the U.S. Foreign Trade Zone Program has been for companies that are manufacturing or processing products and materials who create a finished product, of which some of the parts and components are of foreign origin. In that opportunity, in that example, they both defer any duty payment, and they have the opportunity to reduce or eliminate that duty payment from the cost of their goods to the U.S. marketplace and certainly the foreign market. It makes their exports more competitive as well. So in general, it lowers their cost by an amount that's reasonably easy to determine. It has a cost against it, and you look at the two numbers, and if the benefits are a multiple of the cost, as a private company, you're going to say, "Yes, please."
And that's, if you're bringing in a finished product?
It has a duty deferral opportunity relative to that, but it's not as, what happens, to give you an example of the most used industry in the foreign trade zone program in the U.S. is the automobile industry. Every single car manufacturer in the United States is in the foreign trade zone, including the foreign manufacturers and the domestic manufacturers. As an industry, they globally source, their seatbelts come from Taiwan, their electronics come from China. The duty rate on most of those components averages about 4% to 5%. The duty rate on the car is 1.3%. So on the landed value of those parts and components, they never bring out a seatbelt, they only bring out cars. So on the landed value of the component, they pay the duty rate at 1.3%. Now, times 6 million seatbelts at $12 a pop, that's, that's a chunk of change.
Lot of money.
Yeah, it's a chunk of change. And its purpose of the foreign trade zone program is to, initially, it was to level the playing field. We had what's called an irrational tariff that had duty rates higher on parts and components than finished goods. If you think about that for a minute, it encourages finished goods to be manufactured abroad and brought in in their entirety. What happens in the zone program is it encourages you to source parts and components foreign, but do the actual value add job creation in the United States. So its purpose is to enable U.S. manufacturers to be more competitive, both internally mentioned.
So do businesses know about this, or is, do you reach out to them? I mean, how do you connect the two?
That's something in terms of the next steps, because as mentioned, it's about a six-month application process. What we've discussed with locally developed professionals and organizations, that during the next six months, we'll be working together to develop strategies on how to better educate ourselves on this benefit, as well as how to present it to our corporate clientele. We plan to work with the State Economic Development Office, as well as the International Office of Trade. You know, there's some opportunities to, to promote this, to educate people on the benefit, and identify the existing businesses that could take advantage of the resource, as well as how we can look into the future and market this designation to help maybe attract new investment into the area. So, and, you know, and sitting in on Director Durham's presentation with the governor last week or the other day, I think, I feel like we're very much in line with the state's strategy in terms of trying to create an environment that's conducive to international trade. And so I feel like this is about putting Woodbury County in the right direction to, you know, have our best foot forward. And as Mr. Hooton has said, I've done some research looking at the existing foreign trade zones in Iowa and looking at their fee structure. Northwest Iowa Development's fee structure is comparable. It's actually competitive to the other zones in the state. So if there are corporations looking to shop around, that potentially coming to Iowa, and that could benefit from being in a foreign trade zone, I think the Northwest Iowa Development region is probably the most attractive, in my opinion, so.
We try to be very upfront with the developers we've met with down here in Sioux City, excuse me, in regards to the fact that, yes, you're absolutely correct. It's going to take effort on our parts to get out and talk to the companies, because it does become fairly complex for the companies, and oftentimes, they just, they aren't even aware of it. And even if they are, they aren't sure they want to delve into it unless they have the right guidance for it. And so Northwest Iowa Development did go a step further and hire Mr. Hooton as a consultant, and he is under contract with us through 2014 to make himself available to companies to do initial analysis for them, to determine just roughly whether or not there's even a reason to go further down the road, or it doesn't make sense for this company. And as Woodbury County, if they accept that, our offer, that also is part of that for the end of this year, that he would be available to David and others out here to meet with companies and do an analysis for that at no cost to the company.
Where's, where's your office?
Well, two. So I'm, I'm from New York, but I'm hoping you won't hold that against me. But we found the business opportunity here attractive, and also we formed a new limited liability corporation called International Trade and Transportation- liability corporation called International Trade and Transportation Strategies Iowa is located in La Marz.
Very good.
Any other comments from the board? Looks like we have to have three motions here, as far as I'm concerned. We need one to become part of the Northwest Iowa Development Foreign Trade Zone, item number 288, service territory. First motion, I think, that we need.
Second.
Is there a second? Any further discussion of that motion? Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The second would be approval of a fee application, which is $3,500, they'd be taking from your budget as a membership.
Yes, I'd carve that out of my department's budget and put that taken care of.
I'd move that.
I'd second it. Now, that is a one-time fee?
Yes.
Forever?
Forever. There's really no other anticipated costs or annual renewal costs for our jurisdiction as a county. There may be in the future opportunities for the six counties in the Northwest Iowa Development Region, including Woodbury County, these seven, to maybe potentially share investment costs to reaching consultants such as Mr. Hooton going forward into the future. But that would be really the only anticipated costs associated with us being in the foreign trade zone, so.
I do think you're right, Todd. We need this guy to get...
That's right.
...off the ground.
Having Mr. Hooton here, you know, on the ground is going to be a tremendous benefit to our area businesses and economic development organizations. And as we've, you know, I guess I also wanted to acknowledge the fact that our local city and regional economic development organizations, the Siouxland Chamber, the Initiative, the City of Sioux City's Economic Development Department, have been very good partners in taking a look at this opportunity and helping me analyze the decision. So I feel very grateful that we have good collaboration consensus amongst the economic development departments.
Absolutely, David. That's huge, as far as I'm concerned. We do have a motion on the floor for the application fee. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Now, we need an authorization for the chairman to sign an ASF Service Area Committee Agreement.
Move it.
There's a second. There is a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you, gentlemen. I mean, this is really exciting.
Yeah, hopefully in six months, we'll have more of a celebratory press conference event.
That is right.
And we'll really kick this off, so thank you for your support.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
It is exciting. It's just another tool in our toolbox. That's a quote from Dave Glaser. Our last item is, not last item, but our item is hearing of any individual or group wishing to make a presentation on an item not on the agenda.
I'd like to say something quickly, supervisor.
Yes, sir, you can, absolutely.
As the county attorney, I am an elected official, and I know you guys voted down the pay increase for all elected officials, of which I really don't care. That's probably the best thing to do, regardless of all your motivations were. I've never been driven by pay. I get paid well, but I believe I work hard for what I get paid for. However, since our deputies, their pay are tied to our pay. And so when you agree not to increase my salary, you agree not to increase my deputy's salary. And some of our deputies at work on behalf of the elected officials are some of the hardest-working employees this county has. My deputy is one of the first ones to arrive, excuse me, and one of the first, one of the last ones to leave. So I believe not giving them a pay actually disincentivizes your employees to want to be deputies. And I think that's doing a disservice to the citizens in the long run, because again, those folks, I believe, are some of the hardest-working individuals for the county right now. Again, the pay increase doesn't bother me at all. Again, I've never worked for money. I don't believe, as county attorney, you can do this job for pay. You just can't do it. So moving forward, I would just ask the county, in cases where you vote down a pay increase for the elected officials, that you come up with something that benefits or is on behalf of the benefits of those deputies. Something that gives them more encouragement. It might not be paid, but I believe you can come up with something to, again, provide them with a benefit, especially when all the other employees basically are getting a pay increase, but they're not. But that gives them something that says, hey, we appreciate what you do, we appreciate your service, because again, some of them are also your longest-running employees, that says, we appreciate what you do. No, we can't give you a pay increase, and we understand that, but I believe something needs to be provided to them that shows them that you appreciate what they do.
Well, we'll take some of the responsibility for that, PJ, and, but I think a lot of the responsibility goes back to the Compensation Committee. I think that that Compensation Committee need to, needed to have looked at all of the variables that entails this county or this board making a decision like this. I don't think that that was taken into account, as far as I'm concerned. And it is not fair, based on what you said, it's not fair to treat one group differ, different than another group. That's exactly what happened here. And so, you know, that, part of that responsibility goes back to that, to that, to that Compensation Committee. I'm not going to take full responsibility for the decision or recommendation that they put forth for us to make a decision on. I'm aware, and all the rest of the board members, I think, are aware of, of, yes, these recommendations are tied to our deputies and our very other elected officials' department. But when you start making differentials and, and making it look like a body is more deserving than another, then we, I have a problem with that.
I guess I hear that. I would, I would hope that you, or I would say respectfully, that I disagree with your analogy or your reasoning behind the vote down. I would hope that the vote down of the increase was strictly due to the fact that the county was losing money or lost money during the period, and that we just didn't agree with the increase that would add to the taxes. That, I would think, is why you voted it down, because the Board of Supervisors didn't get an increase versus all the elected officials. I would hope that's not what you're saying. But again, regardless of what the Compensation Committee did, regardless of your votes, I basically agree with your vote. I'm just saying, I hope in the future, we look for something to benefit our deputies.
Thank you.
Thanks, PJ.
Definitely have to agree with PJ. And I was the one that came up here and said zero for all elected officials, I understand it, but PJ is correct that our deputies are tied to our salaries. And that's in the Iowa code, so we really can't do much about that. My problem is, is when elected officials get zero, but yet wage plan gets a raise, and union gets a raise, year after year after year after year after year, we all need to share and sacrifice. So, you know, in the future, please consider that, that, you know, if, if you're competent, or if you're considering giving zero elected officials, consider maybe some, and I realize union is contracted, but you can negotiate on contracts too, so.
All right, thanks. Sheriff.
Just to change the subject a little, we have the Weekender Program at Prairie Hill that I think you're all pretty much familiar with. And in the past, we have not collected money, for whatever reason, for those to serve the time on the weekends. And so I'm working with Dennis and PJ to try to collect $50 a night in the fees that would come into the county, generate a little bit of revenue. We have probably 18 people that do weekends, and those that do weekends are usually those that have drunk driving offenses. So that would be some dollars that we'd bring in. Trying to get, now, there's a catch, a small catch to it, which is very little. It costs $3 a day to have them go work. And what we do is, they work like at the county fair, cleaning up, Saturday in the park, whatever event we can find, clean fire stations and things like that. They can sign up to do that, or then they'll do their weekend at the jail. Most everybody's going to do it at Prairie Hill, it's just, it's a better deal, you know, they're, they can get out a little earlier also. So we're trying to get some of that, those details worked out. What we'd like to see is be a very little, because we're using our reserves to help to go out into the field, but it costs us a little bit more for the food, and we have to have an extra correctional officer come spend the weekend at the facility to kind of keep an eye on that group alone.
Do you have a cost broke out on what, what it costs for that, for that particular service?
Right, we're going to work on that, because what we're thinking is if that small amount could just help offset our overtime that would be there. And I think with Dennis's help, we'll be able to, and PJ making sure that everything seems to be okay, and having them provide that service.
How are you proposing collecting that $50 per fee night on those individuals that, that don't pay?
Well, it's just like room and board, you know, you get it, or they'll, you know, that's, that's some of the things that we have to try to work out. I think we'll be able to collect it, because the advantage is they're going to do their time at Prairie Hill. We do collect fees, I think, around $300,000 from being housed in our main jail, so I think we'll come out ahead here, it's just a...
Implement the same kind of a system there.
Right, yeah. And so what we have to work with the auditor, because we'll be taking in, they'll write a check, and then I'll go to the auditor. The auditor in turn will have to write a $3 check for their, their work. It's $1.50 a day, according to the code. So, but that's it, that's just another way of us trying to figure out how to use that. And that, that is kind of our selling point at Prairie Hill. We do house around 18 people out there every weekend.
What effect would the 24/7 have on the weekenders?
Um, not a whole lot, because under state law, if they test, I believe it's .15 or above, they have to serve two days in jail. And so that's, that's what bulk of our people are. But the weekend, or the 24/7, which, I don't know where that's going, I've been working with the legislators, I, somewhere in Des Moines, somebody thinks it's a bad idea, and unfortunately, we're not in agreement, but, and then lastly...
Is there anything we can do as far as talking to our own legislators with that? I'd be willing to take that on to and help out.
I've been talking to them all, sent them emails, I think I sent you the ones I sent.
And I have said nothing, but maybe another...
Yeah, but it would really help.
Okay.
It really would. I, I hope it's not too late, I mean...
Well, if not this year, we'll just have to try it again for next year.
Right, keep going. I'm with you 100%. It's a, it's a great program. And then lastly, James brought it up, I'm surprised, I didn't know he was going to talk, but there are fleet cards are a huge saving for the sheriff's office, and I would really encourage you to have the department heads look at it, because it is that state tax and all those federal taxes are taken off, so we are saving quite a bit of money there. So maybe throw that out. You guys can look into it, have Dennis give us a shout.
Absolutely.
We'll show you the printout. It's, it's really working well for us.
Okay, good, good.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Sheriff, as long as you're there, how are you coming along with the fine collection? Are you in the county attorney?
That's, that's in PJ's court.
I thought the two of you were working together.
PJ, well, I think I'm going to let him talk, he's wanting to work on it.
As previously stated, we did talk, and I decided that I was going to present something to the board as far as a recommendation for doing fine collections. I planned to do that the first part of this summer. I'm currently working on, and our office is working on a couple homicide cases that are coming up during the month of May, so I won't be able to do anything prior to that. But first part of the summer, June, July, I plan to present a plan, a recommendation as to what it would take for our office to do the fine collections.
That little gal out of Plymouth County would be a great resource if you need information or help on that.
Like I said, this is not a new concept. I've actually been talking about fine collections for about four years now, when we started the process of even getting in our victim witness coordinator. But I threw, I was throwing that out there as well. So we've been doing parts of that. We've actually been doing fine collections on a very small basis. So we believe we've had some parts in place, we believe we know the system, but when I bring that recommendation to the board, there's going to be some variables that you're going to have to take into account. There's going to have to be some cost-benefit analysis that you're going to have to take into account. But I plan to do that fully. It's going to be open in front of the public, so we can all discuss it. You'll be able to look at some numbers, talk with some folks, and then we'll be able to discuss and maybe change, you might have some other ideas, but we'll talk about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, PJ.
There one last thing.
Good.
One last. You approved the 250 for court security.
Yes, we did.
Just need to know, maybe we should get together as that committee again and see how we want to proceed.
We'll probably be doing that soon on how we're going to pursue the employment, the physical part as far as cameras and that kind of thing, and, because we'll need to get started on that.
Right, I would just throw out one recommendation. I think maybe more part-time bodies, but, you know, keep it all, and when we, county starts taking in more money, we'll work on a lot more cameras, but that's just kind of...
Yeah, because, because we have to stay within that $250,000, no matter what.
Right, exactly.
Okay. Any other items? Seeing none, let's move on to the last item we have, and that's the Woodbury County Courthouse Foundation Board. Is Patty here for that? Did you see, have her come down?
Do we have to adjourn?
Yeah, we have to adjourn, and then...
Move to adjourn.
Okay. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and then Patty gets down here, I'll...